Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 19, 2021 Wednesday, Elyria Board of Education meeting. First of all, I call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Here.
Mr. Bax?
Here.
Mr. Elick?
Here.
Mr. Gephardt?
Here.
And Mrs. Segwin?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance as soon as the Treasurer is ready? Thank you. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Thank you so much. Thank you. At this time, I would like to do introductions. First, we have our board members. I have Board Member Mike Gephardt. I have Board Member Greg Elick. Board Member Elaine Segwin. And I have Vice President Jim Bax. And I am President Annie Karstoffen. I have with us this evening our Superintendent Anne Sloss. And our newly award-winning Treasurer, we gotta add another year, Joy Clickinger. Alrighty, thank you so much. At this time, do we have any board recognitions tonight? No. No board recognitions. We have presentation coming from our award-winning Treasurer is the update of the five-year forecast.
Okay, I'm going to try and do this virtually. You know, put it up there so you can see it. Hopefully, it all works. So give me just a second here. Okay, can you see? A spreadsheet?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Alright.
Yes.
Alright, so we'll get started. Thank you, President Karstoffen. I always like to start with the basics. You'll hear this every time. What's the purpose of a five-year forecast? The mission of Elyria's schools is ensuring that each child reaches his or her full potential. And this exercise is one of the many tools that we use to see the resources available to do just that. Also, it's required by the Ohio Department of Education and the Auditor's Office to identify school districts with potential financial problems. So what does the forecast cover? It covers general fund only. Other funds are typically money that come in for certain purposes and are expend- and the expenditures are dictated. For instance, the building funds, local, state, and federal grants, debt service. Those monies come in, but they're here for a certain purpose and it doesn't funnel into our general fund. What has further complicated the forecast, though, is the influx of the federal relief dollars, the COVID relief dollars. They're called the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. We call them ESER for short. Thank goodness. We've received an allocation of 2.2 million in ESER I funds. We also have received 10.7 million in ESER II funds. And we have confirmation of approximately 24 million in ESER III funds. For a total of $37 million. Now typically, when we get dollars like that, they go into a separate fund. Therefore, these ESER dollars are a little bit different. While they're not general fund dollars, and they do come with some strings attached, they're also not bound by supplanting regulations. So we can use these dollars to pay for things that we initially thought we'd have to pay for with general fund dollars. So balance that with the unexpected expenditures due to the pandemic and voila, you get a five-year forecast. But back to that point, we have been to date able to take some salaries out of general fund and put them into the ESER grants. So if our revenues come down, or excuse me, if our expenditures come down, then our cash balance would go up. That's what's happening with this. Now, there are things that, like I said, there's strings tied to the ESER dollars. Compared to a lot of grants, it leaves open more things that we can charge to, but we still do have to follow those guidelines. Okay, the other thing I wanted to say before we get into it is that the five-year forecast merely updates the forecast that was last given to you. And that would have been in November. In this case, we started with a forecast from November and updated from there. It can be revisited at any time. As a matter of fact, I don't bring it to you on a monthly basis, but we do update it monthly. Just to watch for anything that's unexpected. I looked up what I said in November and even back as far as May, when we were just a couple months into the pandemic. And I normally would tell you that the five-year forecast is based on history and trends and assumptions. And I really can't say that right now. Things are not predictable by looking at history and trends. We're still in unprecedented times. And I hopefully, I dare to say, things might be calming down a bit. But we're still in unprecedented times with the federal dollars that we're getting. We're also still working on what might be able to be taken from general fund and put into ESER funds. This forecast is based on my opinion of where we're headed with those things. And we have a lot of unknowns and changes that are coming. The one thing that is certain is changes are coming. If you look at the forecast, you'll see that our, we start, I've got the first column, and this is format prescribed by the Ohio Department of Education. But the first column is last year. So those numbers are given, they're not going to change, they will remain the same. Fiscal '21, or the one that's just labeled 2021, started last July 1 and goes through this June 30, as do the rest of the fiscal years. So 2021 should be pretty much where it's going to be, short of if we can find some general fund expenditures that we can now put into the ESER funds. That would be, otherwise, I know that they're very close. And as you can see with our 37 million in federal dollars, we will have to, I don't want to say work at spending that, but we need to be very conscientious of what we charge to that, to make sure that we don't leave anything left on the table. My agenda for this evening, I want you to understand the five-year forecast is based on my best crystal ball. I've made many assumptions that I cannot base on trends due to the unprecedented times. My assumptions are based on discussions with leaders in school finance, our leadership team, and of course, my own biases. Don't get comfortable with the numbers that you see. The only truism is that they will change. We're going to start with an overall summary. Just a minute. And the yellow line is our cash balance line, which has taken a turn for the good, thanks to the ESER dollars. But the bottom line, the number that everybody always wants to see is at the end of the five-year forecast, where will we be? Well, I'm proposing that will be 10.6 million plus. That does assume that both of the levies that are coming due get renewed. And with everything that's happening right now, that's a whole new, different discussion than what we thought we had two years ago. So anyway, we'll get into that later. The piece that I would like you to see is, I'm more of a numbers person. I'm not the graph kind of person like I just showed you. So if you look at this spreadsheet, you can see that the beginning balance, you can see the first line is the beginning balance that we assume each year. And it is a positive balance throughout, through the forecast. There, like I said before, it does include the renewal of the two levies. And incidentally, those two levies are right at, well, they're just a hair over 20 mils. So that's a big chunk. But the assumption is that we renew those. The ESER dollars give us a little bit of a different angle on that. But we still need to pay attention to them. Renewals are easier than new money. We've built quite a cliff here that we can't help. If we, if ESER can pay for some things when that's over with in '24, '25, in that range, then all that stuff will come back to general fund. So we have to keep that in mind. Okay, so the next line is the revenue. And it's got a little plus in front of it. You can see that it stays pretty steady. I have it going down a little over a million dollars next year. But that's because we received almost, well, a little over a million dollars from the Bureau of Workers' Comp this year. And I don't anticipate that to happen again. That was kind of another COVID relief gesture, I believe. And you can see the new levies that are in there. And it says, I said new, the replacement piece of those levies are in there. And then you can also see that expenditures, and we'll get more into these later, continue to grow. Some of these, I anticipate the expenditure to go down because of ESER. But I don't have that right now.
What? The heck?
What? Okay. Now, if if we look at the expenditure category, overall expenditures are shown with an average of 2.7% increase over the five years each year. And a couple things on that is, again, and I've said this before, we're self-insured on our medical plans. I continue to put 12% growth in those because a 12% increase on premiums is not, not a lot. But we were fortunate again this year. Last year, we had a 0% increase. This year, we have I say last year, in this year, we had zero. Starting next year, we're going to have 2%. In the forecast, I got 12% for the rest of the time. Did we lose Greg? Nope, he's still there. Okay.
He wasn't me.
Got it. Got it. You can see how our expenditures are divided up. Salaries is the biggest group, benefits is typically, we like to talk about salaries and benefits as one cost because so many of them are linked together. The gray purchase service area has a lot of tuition expenses in it. Let's see, what else did I want to make sure you knew? Alright, and then all of these things combined get us to what is the five-year forecast. Everybody always wants to go down to the last line. Our last line is fabulous. It's because, it's because of the gift of ESER. You know, at one point, we thought we were going to have to put some money into some of the things that we needed for the new buildings. But we no longer have to do that. So that came out. ESER covered some of those things. It's just truly been a gift. Couple things I want you to keep in mind is that it's not unusual for a five-year forecast to fluctuate because we're not in control of revenues. And expenditures are kind of questionable about how much we're in control of. Things like our students', special need costs, tuition to go to other districts, we're just not in control of that. The five-year forecast is based on assumptions that can change due to legislation, which if the House bill makes it through on the new school funding, the way it currently is, we are very favorable as far as the dollars we'll receive. But you know, you just, you don't know where that's, where it's going till it gets through the legislature. There's also, you know, if there's a change in leadership and just changing circumstances. Period. So keep that in mind. There's no one thing that got us here. And there's not going to be one thing that's going to make us go a different direction. It's a whole lot of moving pieces. We're very fortunate to have the cash reserves. If we started, not if, we started this current fiscal year with a cash balance of right here, 25 million. And we look to end with 10 million. So as you can see, we are deficit spending in the last three years. Regardless of ESER dollars. That's the way I have it forecast.
Joy, what line is ESER dollars in?
They're not. See, that's the whole, that's what makes it difficult is because ESER, we have to keep separate from general fund. So the only thing that you should see in general fund are not expenditures. I mean expenditures that we can move someplace else, things that we have to. For instance, one of the things that I believe will get approved is some textbook adoptions because we're doing a lot of that so that if this ever happens again, or if we need to continue, that we have online resources. So
So out of those ESER dollars, what are the restrictions in those dollars?
You know what? Anne has talked this so many times, I'm going to let her give you all the rules. It's like, go ahead, Anne.
That's okay. There are five questions that they want us to ask every time we go to allocate an ESER. And it's, does it help us move kids back to the classroom? Is it reasonable? Is it, here, let me quote them exactly. Is it reasonable and does does it follow the allowable uses? Is it necessary? But all these things that they want us to ask ourselves before we allocate the money. So for instance, the textbook purchase you're going to see on tonight for social studies. We are making things more user-friendly for both online and in-classroom. So does that help us get the kid, the students back into the classroom that, and be able to use it at home if we need to break out again? Yes. So that's an allowable use. Does it provide equity? So for the students that don't have, you know, if we're buying Chromebooks with the ESER dollars instead of the general fund, that provides equity amongst all, you know, economically disadvantaged students. So there's all these different reasons we have to, but there are five, kind of five questions I ask every time Joy and I are looking at things and whether or not they're allowable for use. For instance, cleaning supplies. And we're allowed to supplant, Greg, which is new. Usually, we cannot supplant. So for instance, we had some software intervention programs that used to be out of the general fund. And because now they're online programs, they can also use at home, we're able to supplant and use them within the allowable ESER dollars. So anything that we feel we can use that ESER money and the American Rescue Plan money for, we are trying to, which then in turn makes our general fund not have to spend the dollars.
Okay, so I guess what I'm asking is at the end of the day, I'm not a nonprofit expert by all means, but if we've been granted that money, I'm a little surprised why it doesn't show up in our five-year forecast if that's money that we've received through grant. I do know a little bit about, you know, accounting for grants. Are we, I'm just curious, are we sure we're doing this right?
I'm absolutely 100-plus sure that we're doing it right, as far as accounting for it. When you look at this five-year forecast and we talk about all of our other grants, like 6B and all of those, those are not in here either.
Okay.
So we probably got another 22 million in dollars that don't show up on the general fund.
Geez, it's almost like we need to do a five-year forecast and then a five-year forecast with all the grant money. You know what I mean?
Well, but the reason why that doesn't happen is because, number one, you never know what you're going to get from year to year. But secondly, it is, it is very much tied to certain expenditures. And there isn't
Couldn't these expenses that you have on there be gone and used with grant money?
Yes. Here's a perfect example Joy and I worked on already. We had to hire 12 teachers for the entire year for, to help with the virtual teaching because we needed more teachers. So the ESER CARESAC money covered that cost for us. Which in a normal year, if we had to hire more teachers for something, we would have had to take it directly out of general fund.
Is there any way the board can get like just the list of dollars we have sitting out there for ESER, all these grants, that there's expenditures on this five-year forecast that could actually be eventually removed and used with grant money?
Well, we also have a, we have a requirement that we have to file a 30-day plan and then a 90-day plan for these ESER dollars. Part of that, just because there's so many moving pieces, we're planning on taking some real time, like, I don't know, half a day or a day, and taking cabinet and working through all of that. When we get that plan together, then we will share it with you guys.
And I don't think, at least I'll speak for myself, I don't need an elaborate forecast with all the grant and ESER dollars. But it would nice to know, be known, how many dollars we have sitting there since obviously, the board is, it's their fiduciary duty to be running this show, so.
Okay.
Right.
Alright.
And then the other thing to remember is if, you know, like the cash balances that you do get on a monthly basis, those have a cash balance in them. But we don't get state and federal dollars until after we spend them. So the balance will look like it's negative or like we don't have much money. But that's just because we spend it and then we apply for the cash, then we get the money in. We keep spending, I mean, it's just a little bit behind, so.
Okay, that sounds good. At least that way, we'll be in the loop on all the dollars that we have. So that's, that's really helpful. Great. That's good news.
Okay, so I didn't have anything else to say except for, you know, the thing that I always end with is that we're committed to being responsible stewards of all the funds that pass through the district. And with this, I will be asking the board for approval of the five-year forecast a little later on in the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Joy. Are there any other questions by any other board members? I do have one question, and I don't know where this would. I noticed that you gave the percentage of real estate taxes. Now, it is my understanding that the real estate taxes are assumed to go up by what, 11 to 15%? This year, this coming year, which taxes are a full year behind? So that would put us in a better position as well, right, in the collection of real estate taxes, correct?
Not as much as you think because of House Bill 920, which says, at the point that you passed it, if the values go up, you're still going to remain the same. So if, for instance, if the value of your home goes up, that would in your mind make you think, okay, now I'm going to have to pay more taxes. But reality is that if ever, this is assuming a whole lot of things, but if everybody goes up the same amount, nobody pays extra. Because we, House Bill 920 says that we won't earn more money off that levy than what we did when we passed it. The effective mills drop.
The millage drops, okay.
The millage drops. So as the rate goes up, the millage drops, we get the same money.
So the dollars stay constant?
Yes. Pretty much.
The new construction, and we do have new construction, I understand, in the city. So the new construction, that would also be included, correct?
Right. Now with, you said what, 11 to 15%?
That's what I heard, yeah.
Yeah, and I put in, you know, because I work with those dollars, even though they don't bring us additional revenues, I've got in, in my notes, 11%, so.
Okay.
I have one more question. Joy, on those grants, you said most of them, we have to spend the dollars. So I'm assuming in the accounting world, those are called exchange transactions. I think you have to, you know, spend the money and get it back. Do we have any contributory grants where the money is already ours and we don't have to, you know, spend it in a certain way, in that amount that you were talking about?
I'm trying to think if we do have any of those.
Any material ones, I guess.
I can't think of any material ones, can you, Anne?
Okay.
That we get You know, the only grants like that, to my knowledge, would be probably like the Stalker Foundation, but it's always earmarked towards certain expenditures.
Yeah, okay.
Any of the foundations that we get the grants, you know, Nordson. Yeah, saw them, do we get the money ahead of the expenditure? And that's why at the end of the year, come next month, I'll be asking you to approve the advance of those funds because we'll have already spent the dollars. We've got to close everything in June 30. We can't close it with a negative balance. So we advance the money. Then when the money gets to us, then we advance back.
Well, I guess the important thing is that we're getting the money and keep up the good work there. That's whether they're contributory or exchange, at least we're getting the money. So you guys are doing a good job on that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If there are no further questions, we'll move on and later we'll be asked to approve the forecast. Okay, so next, we have no visitors' comments for the night. Do we have any board member discussion items?
I'd just like to say, I went over to the prom Saturday. First prom I've ever got thrown out of.
I don't believe that.
They just didn't let me in.
You guys said I had to leave, but we talked it out, but I think I could have taken him, but probably not. He's pretty big. But anyways, it looked really nice and the kids looked like they were having a great time. So I'm glad that went well. It was a beautiful night. So I'm glad that went well and it was a beautiful night.
Good. Um, I just want to, want to say that I went over, uh, yesterday to the, um, ELE stadium and, um, the safety town, it was a blast. It was excellent. And the kids, I heard, uh, several kids says, this, this is the best day ever. So it was worth all of the effort and I just want to commend everyone for every part that they played in making sure that this week and I believe last week were successful because the kids really seemed to have been enjoying themselves to the utmost and hats off to everyone. They did a wonderful job.
They did, yes, they did.
Anyone else? If not, moving on to F, uh, meeting minutes. The minutes have been posted. Hopefully you've had the opportunity to, uh, review the minutes. Uh, at this time, I will accept them. I will listen for a motion to approve the Board of Education proceedings for the meeting of May fifth, two thousand and twenty-one as detailed in enclosure F one. May I please have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Elick. Could I please have a second?
Second. It was Mr. Gebhardt, I believe.
Oh, that was Mr. Geb, okay, that was Mr. Gebhardt. I saw you rocking, I just assumed. So are you making the second or no?
Second, I am.
Second by Mr. Elick. Thank you, Mr. Gebhardt with the first and Mr. Elick with the second. Are there any questions? No question. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Hi.
Mr. Elick?
Hi.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin?
Hi.
And Ms. Karstappen.
Hi, thank you. Motion carries. G is Treasurer Action Items.
Thank you. Uh, my first item is the monthly financial reports. The second is asking for approval on the attached purchase orders. And those are my two items this evening.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to, um, a motion by a board member to approve the items recommended by the treasurer as presented?
Move to approve.
Move by Mr. Jim Bax. May I please have a second?
A second, my line.
Second by Elaine. Thank you. Are there any questions on any of the treasurer's action items? Be a nun. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin?
Hi.
Mr. Elick?
Hi.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Hi.
And Ms. Karstappen.
Hi, thank you. Motion carries. Next is H, which is Treasurer Other.
Yes, um, I'm asking for approval of the updated May five-year forecast um, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the items recommended by the treasurer as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Elick. May I please have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt. No questions? Any questions? No questions. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Hi.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Hi.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin?
Hi.
And Ms. Karstappen.
Hi, thank you. Motion carries. J is OFCC, OSFC, or Sports Complex?
We don't remember.
Nothing tonight? Okay, K, then it will be our Superintendent Action Items.
Thank you, President Karstappen.
You're very welcome.
First of all, the next couple are just, uh, annual contracts, uh, first with Cleveland Hearing and Speech. The second one is the interagency contract. And then the third one there is with our Jaworski Physical Therapy. Fourth is the OHSAA membership. I will say that went up a little, obviously with lack of, um, gate receipts and everything else. Last year, they did raise their dues a little bit. And then we have a purchase order and that concludes, uh, oh, well, it, this purchase order is what we spoke about, the social studies. Um, and we have not adopted social studies in many years. So just because there really wasn't anything new out there, but this is, uh, five through eight middle school curriculum and it has an online component. So that concludes my action items.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the items recommended by the superintendent as presented?
So moved.
Still moved by Mr. Elick. May I please have a second?
Second.
Second by Elaine Segwin. Are there any questions? No question. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Hi.
Segwin?
Hi.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Hi.
And Ms. Karstappen.
Hi, thank you. Motion carries. Next is Superintendent Other.
Yes, this is, uh, the, the best part of every year, the graduation list. So we have four hundred and twenty-two graduates in this list. So I ask for your approval of the completion of all the requirements for these graduates of twenty twenty-one. And that is it for Other.
I'll make the motion.
Still moved by Mr. Gebhardt and he will then call all the names. No, just kidding. Uh, may I please have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bax. Any questions? No question. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Hi.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Hi.
Mrs. Segwin?
Hi.
And Ms. Karstappen.
Hi, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to Personnel Action Items Recommended by the Superintendent.
Thank you. Bear with me, it's a long list as it usually is at this time. But first of all, for the retirement of the following certified staff, Darlene Jedon, a school counselor. Uh, she was twenty years in Ilaria, but I believe this is about forty years overall. Um, and intervention specialist Fran Wondrek from the high school, who's been with us for fourteen years. So we wish them well to great employees. Next, um, this is, uh, the word termination is, and this is, um, an annual thing. It's termination of all the long-term subs, the daily subs, the tutors and, and the supplemental contracts. So as you see that below, we ask for your approval. Number three is the, to approve the appointment of the follow, following administrative staff. These are all the changes that were announced, um, a, a couple of weeks ago. Number four is the renewal of the administrative contracts. These are, uh, those administrators that were, their contracts were expiring and up for renewal. Number five is to approve the employment on the continuing contracts in the following certified staff. Six, to approve the one-year limited contracts for the following certified staff. To approve the athletic supplemental contracts. Uh, we're already starting to approve the fall supplemental contracts as you see below. The grade is to approve the following payment for those, uh, individuals that will help during working rental events. Number nine is to approve the following J O R T C instructed to attend the mandatory five-day conference they go to each year. The next, number ten is to approve the stipend payment up to that amount for the extended learning. Um, and, and it'll be based on how many days they work and how many hours. Eleven is to approve the payment for the following other supplemental activities from nineteen twenty. That is not a typo. If, um, it's always a year and a year, so this is for those that did it two years in a row for the nineteen twenty year, and that's how it's set up per our contract. Number twelve is to approve the payment of the following community engagement liaisons, we call themselves, for up to ninety hours, they're going to help with the extended learning. Number thirteen, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff member. Number fourteen, to approve the termination of all the following classified, this is again, an annual thing, the personal attendance that are listed and also the security resource officers. Number fifteen is to approve the unpaid leave of absence of a classified staff member. Sixteen, to approve the appointment of the following classified administrative staff. One note is Erica was the administrative assistant to Ramona Mendek, who you know is retiring. We have kind of absorbed her position and reallocated some of her duties around. So Erica is moving to coordinator of some of the testing and EMIS requirements. She just finished all of the training on EMIS, so we welcome her to that move. And then next is to approve the renewal of the classified administrative contact, tracks. Eighteen, to approve the two-year limited contracts as following, uh, to the following classified staff. Nineteen is to approve the annual stipend for Patty Steitler. She works a lot of extra hours on graduation. And that concludes all of my personnel action items.
Wow, you were right, that was long. Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, may I please have a motion to approve the personnel items as recommended by the superintendent as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gebhardt. May I please have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bax. Any questions on anything?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
And, um, the security officers, it didn't look like they were all listed. Don't they usually list all of them?
So this year, we really, we had, we only used one, uh, Officer Figula a couple of days up at the high school because we did not have a, a lot of students in the buildings and for a time period, we weren't even in the buildings. We had a very small group sign contracts for use. Um, so that, that is why it's much smaller.
That makes sense.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Hi.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Hi.
Mrs. Segwin?
Hi.
And Ms. Karstappen.
Hi, thank you. Motion carries. Um, O is Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, just real quick, just reiterate what Mr. Gebhardt said. I have to give kudos to the whole high school staff, especially, uh, Jackie Underley and Aramark. What a fabulous night prom was and their dinner, they had like a five-course meal. They had charcuterie boards on the table. It was, it was really a cool night. So kudos and the, and the students had a blast. Also, on May twenty-eighth, um, as you know, the Lorraine County, uh, Special Olympics was postponed, but each district is kind of doing their own thing. So on May twenty-eighth, we're calling it the Pioneer Challenge out at the, um, stadium. Um, and I believe it's, it's, Denise, could you tell us the hours on that?
What was that? I'm sorry.
The hours on the Pioneer Challenge?
Oh, it is, it starts at, uh, nine-thirty and will go until about one-thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and then, um, the Memorial Day Parade, our band is marching and they have about ninety participants, so we're really excited to see them live. And also the J R O T C will be there. And then just a reminder, graduation, June eighth, it's coming up. And that is all I have tonight.
What time is graduation?
I believe it starts at seven, but Tim Brown, he's on here. Tim Brown.
I'm sure you'll let us know.
Yeah, we'll let you know for sure, but there he is.
Seven o'clock is correct.
Yep, seven.
June eighth graduation, okay. All righty, thank you so much. Um, P is Board of Education. Do we have anything from any board members?
I have one question. I looked at the core meeting. Um, and they said, uh, those boulders at ELE is going to cost sixteen thousand to seventeen thousand dollars to get rid of them. I thought, well, is he going to do something with those?
Well, understand, um, Dave Stahl from AECOM is working on that because, um, as we stated in our meeting, that was all part of it, that the, any of that would be removed. So that is not going to be money that we spend. Um, and they are looking at a better way to, um, move it. The problem is the size of them. Um, and today they were supposed to clean up that whole corner area around the boulders and everything. I did talk to Sean yesterday. So that should all be, um, looking much better today, hopefully, so.
Okay, good.
Nothing else? Okay, at this time, we're moving on to Q, which is an executive session. I would like to ask for a motion to request an executive session for the purpose or of considering the discipline or dismissal of a public employee with possible action to follow as authorized under Ohio Revised Code, section one twenty-one point two-two. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Elaine Segwin. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jim Bax. At this time, we will enter into executive session as soon as the treasurer is, treasurer is ready.
As soon as we, um, call the roll here.
All right, call the roll, yes, so sorry.
Mrs. Segwin?
Hi.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Hi.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Hi.
And Ms. Karstappen.
Hi, thank you. Now we will enter as soon as the treasurer.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Hi.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
Mrs. Segwin?
Hi.
And Ms. Karstappen.
Hi, thank you. I would like to now, now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Illyria City School District, Lorraine County, Ohio, that, section one, it is the intention of the Board of Education to consider the termination of the teaching and supplemental contract of Doreen Evans, hereafter employee, on the basis of good and just cause within the meaning of Ohio Revised Code three-three-one-nine-point sixteen. And that is what you all have before you at this moment. May I please have a motion?
You know what? I forgot to let them back in, um, from the, uh, I've got Jeanette Cora and Linda Guanagua waiting. So can I leave them in and then, uh, we'll go from there?
So the board members hear me or they couldn't hear me?
I can hear you.
Can anyone else hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I hear, I hear you.
But I don't see any, okay. I don't believe Anne heard me. Uh, yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I got you. I heard you.
You, yeah. You want to repeat it again because we do not have everybody in.
Okay, but I don't know that the board members are hearing me.
I am here, Elaine's here.
You're hearing me, Elaine. Can I get a response from the other three board members?
Yes, I hear you. Jim.
I heard you.
Okay, you guys left me a little stranded, I know. Okay. Okay, go ahead, Joy.
Okay, we, we did attendance and everyone is here, so you can go on with your resolution.
Thank you. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Illyri, that the Board of Education for the Illyria City School District, Lorraine County, Ohio, that, section one, it is the intention of the Board of Education to consider the termination of the teaching and supplemental contract of Doreen Evans, hereafter employee, on the basis of good and just cause within the meanings of Ohio Revised Code three-three-one-nine-point sixteen, which is what you all have in front of you. May I please have a motion to accept this resolution at the time, at this time?
Move to approve, Annie.
Thank you. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Move, motion made by Mr. Bax and second by Mr. Gebhardt. Are there any questions? No question. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Hi.
Mr. Elick?
Epstein.
Mrs. Segwin?
Hi.
And Ms. Karstappen.
Hi, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, um, moving on. Is there any other business to come before this board this evening? Be there no, no further business. May I please have a motion, um, to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Elick. Could I please have a second? Second by Mr. Gebhardt. Thank you, Madam Tre, are there any questions? No questions. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Hi.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin.
Aye.
And Ms. Karstappen.
Aye, thank you. Please consider yourself adjourned. Thank you so much.